Mr. Long, whenever you're ready, you do your thing.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 20th, 2021 Citrus School Committee meeting. I'm going to call the meeting together by high roll, call vote. Borkowski?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Long, yes. Gates?
Yes.
And Lindblom?
Yes.
Thank you. As normal, this meeting will be recorded and posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available through Zoom later in the agenda. And if people have any questions or comments after the meeting, they're more than welcome to email me at Mlong@cit.org or the appropriate school employee. So first on the agenda, we have the Student Advisors Report. We'll turn it over to Ms. Reese and Mr. Kindley.
Hi, how is everyone?
Excellent.
Good, thank you. Sorry. Oh, my God, I just took a bite of backer, if I'm going to be honest. That was tough, tough start for me. Anyway, this week, the Robotics Team Coding Group will be learning some Java programming to start to understand how to code robots to be functional, and the Fabrication Team will be building a stand to hold the robot chassis and make it easier to work on. Currently, ninth grade student government is selling class hoodies for the class of 2025. They will be working with the sophomore class to plan a spring dance after the winter holidays. If you'd like to support the class of 2025 with a purchase of a hoodie, you can contact Jane Ryan at the NormalStudent.Cit.org email account. My senior student government is actively putting together the pieces of our senior year. Groups of representatives are simultaneously work on planning prom, the senior dinner dance, the senior picnic, and the class trip to Laugh Boston. As we enthusiastically put together all the working pieces of these events, we're planning a few fundraisers, like a triple A fundraiser and senior skate night at Hobart to keep up with funding. The Situations staff invited SAHS alumni who are currently pursuing degrees or professional careers in journalism to meet with this year's Honors Journalistic Writing Class during a December 17th coffee hour. Schools such as Syracuse University, Boston College, UCLA, NYU, Emerson College, and the University of Massachusetts were representative. GSA is back this year, which is great. The club meets twice a week, and membership is as high as it's been in the past four years. Currently, there's 20 members on Google Classroom. The club has done everything from participating in the club's carnival back in the fall to processing incidents of hate in a safe and brave space. GSA is currently working on raising awareness about the transgendered youth community. If anyone has questions about the club, please reach out to Mr. Scapalotti. The Environmental Honors Class are, have taken an offsite to the Cituit Harbor Tuesday, to Cituit Harbor on Tuesday, December 14th, to speak with local fishermen Tucker Carlson and Dave Haley to better understand fishing practices and sustainable ways to help marine well-being, as well as how policies and regulations affect their industry. On the flip side, the Coastal Advisory Commission from the town government side has explained their efforts in managing the coastline to learn about Cituit 2070 vision initiatives. The Environmental Club is taking a trip on December, or I'm sorry, has taken a trip on December 15th to Roger Williams Zoo to witness their likes display. They enjoyed a taco bar at the high school and headed out for an evening of fun. They were thrilled to be enjoying by the best buddies, the Mecca Program and the Middle School Environmental Club. Tomorrow is the Band and Chorus Holiday Concert during school. The concert is actually one of the most fun events of the year. Shout out to the seniors, Thomas Blake, me, Willie Todd, and Dimitriya Fronasenko for implementing dancing and interactive clapping experiences to the traditional concert format. And Johnny can take the last point.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late. Just back from basketball practice. And so, speaking of sports, I'll give you an update on sports. The gymnastics team there for me of these at their combined gymnastics team. The boys hockey, the girls hockey team is two and two, and they had a three to one win over Norwell yesterday. The girls basketball team won their first game over Archbishop Williams and is looking to turn things around after two losses in a row. And finally, the boys basketball team, we're off to a pretty good start with a three and oh, three and oh start and a win over Menhans and their 35 game win streak, which is pretty big. So we're excited about that, and we're excited to play tomorrow night away. That's a lake. So, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks, Johnny. Thanks, Celia. Are there any questions from the committee from the two student reps? I just had one. I know you mentioned a number of fundraisers that are going on, Celia. Is there, is that broadcast out anyway through the town, or is it really just, like, I've seen something on Facebook, but that's really it?
You know, it's mostly internal, like, you know, the ninth grade student government, their hoodies. That's probably more geared towards the class of 2025. And we haven't, like, really efficiently found a way to broadcast it to a town, but if there was a way, I'd love to know. Maybe making our senior skate night, just letting parents know that would be great. Yeah, so, nothing as of now. But if that's a possibility, I'd love to look into it.
Okay, maybe there's something we can do as well, but it would be good to, you know, get that out there so that everyone's aware. Because if not, I see something as I'm driving by, opposed to, you know, knowing ahead of time and being able to be a part of it. But, okay, that's good to know.
Sounds great. Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out.
All right, well, thank you both. So next on the agenda is, under New Business, is an out-of-state field trip request to Canobie Lake Park with Principal Beatty.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. We, I am here today to present a proposal to take our seventh and eighth grade band and chorus classes to Canobie Lake Park. This is a field trip that we have done in the past for many, many years. What happens at this field trip is our students perform for a judge. They receive a critique and they do a workshop to focus on aspects of their performance that they can improve. And then in the second half of the day, they get to experience the fun that Canobie Lake Park offers. And so it's kind of a culminating experience for our students in the Band and Chorus Program. And we would love to go on Friday, June 10th. The cost of this program is $50 per student, which covers the admission to the park as well as transportation. We do have financial assistance for those students that are in need. We would leave at 7:45 in the morning and return to Gates at 8:00 PM. So those are the details, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And I know in the past, there's been a lot of great feedback from students in the Band and Chorus Group after that, just in terms of, you know, how well it benefits students to get that critique and then obviously being able to Canobie Lake afterwards.
It's, it's a fun one, yes.
Are there any questions for Principal Beatty? I know we've seen this a number of times over the past couple of years. Are there any questions regarding the field trip from the committee? If not, I will entertain a motion on the field trip request.
I'll make a motion that the school committee approves the out-of-state field trip for the band, the Gates Band, on June 10th, 2022 to Canobie Lake Park.
Band and Chorus.
Band and Chorus.
Second, I'll second.
Thanks, Peter. So there will call vote. Long, yes. Brandalini?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
And Borkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, Principal Beatty.
Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda, under the Leadership Reports, first we have the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you Chairman Long. First thing I'd like to do is share some good news from our district and celebrate some of our amazing staff that have been chosen to do great things to represent Cituit in, at the state level, which is not always common, and we've got multiple and multiple celebrations tonight that I'd like to share with the school community. First, I'll start with Heather Allen, our new STEM and PK5 curriculum coordinator. She's been selected to serve on the, on DESI's Grade Four Math MCAS Assessment Development Committee. The MCAS tests are developed by staff in collaboration with the, an ADC committee. So these members review and make recommendations for test questions and serve in advisory capacity to DESI. And so it's a very powerful, important position, very competitive, so I want to congratulate her. In situ, Ms. Allen serves on our Curriculum Acceleration Committee and our PD Committee as well. So we look forward to her continued contributions as she works forward to developing a world-class STEM experience for our Cituit Public Schools students. I might add also that being on that committee, she has firsthand experience on the rigor of the questions, the type of questions, and we'll be able to bring that back to support, help our staff that are support our students. So, great thing there. So, congratulations. Next, I'd like to congratulate our very own Principal Rebecca Long, who attended Northeastern University doctoral program over the past five years and has successfully earned her Doctorate of Education, EDD, with a concentration in innovative teaching and learning, curriculum teaching, learning and leadership. And her dissertation focus was around performance-based assessments and providing equitable opportunities for all students to be successful. So from now on, we'll be referring to Ms. Long as Dr. Long. Extremely important and prestigious honor and a lot of hard work and time and effort. These research, I believe, shows that only 2% of the people in the world have doctoral degrees, so congratulations, Dr. Long. And finally, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Driscoll was appointed to a second term as an at-large member in October for the Mass School District Accountability Assistance Advisory Council at the state level. Not only has she been re-upped on this committee, she has been promoted to co-chair, which is a major acknowledgement to her contributions on that council. This 15-member council advises the Mass Board of Ed on matters pertaining to the development and implementation of the Commonwealth School Accountability Assistance System. We shared that, if you recall, a little bit earlier in the year. It's how schools are assessed. MCAS is one piece of that, attendance, dropout rates, things like that. All of the accountability measures, really important things. Ms. Driscoll is part of that, and now plays a role as co-chair in developing those agendas and meeting with important people around the state who have the Board of Education's ear and what's important to assessing schools. So again, she can bring that information back to us and make us a better district. So, three great announcements tonight. Shout out to all of those folks on jobs well done. Next, I'd like to give an update on our mass flexible implementation at the high school, which is started about six days ago, but four school days. Now, first of all, I want to thank the high school leadership team, students and staff. You know, as we navigate our transition to the mass flexible policy, understanding that any changes during COVID, as we've experienced over the last two years in running, are change, are difficult and certainly not easy. So I want to thank all them, especially those folks in navigating this. I also wanted to acknowledge some context that, and celebrate, again, the, the community that in speaking and doing a poll of surrounding South Shore towns and even those in the state, were one of the few at the high school that have reached the 80% threshold that the state has provided for 80% vaccination rates. So that's a kudos to our staff and our students for making this happen and putting us in this position, because a lot of people aren't even close to the 80%, and we're up close to 85, 84% and climbing. So we recommend people continue to do that. We know it works, and it's helping us at the high school level currently. Of the surrounding towns and districts, which we like to always kind of keep an eye on and compare and talk about for certain things, Norwell and Cohasset are the other two schools that have reached 80%. Both districts have moved to a mass flexible plan. So of the three that were included in Norwell and Cohasset have also joined us in doing that, Norwell since early November. And Cohasset started theirs December 6th, the week before us. Speaking with both superintendents, things are going safe, responsibly and successfully. In fact, the Cohasset is looking to do their middle school in mid-January. So wanted to give some context there, and then I wanted to turn it over to Dr. McGuire just to talk folks through the process that was, that we went through to prepare for this and an update on how things are going and letting people know that that's certainly something we talk about and look at daily as part of our job. So I'll end my presentation today by handing it over to Dr. McGuire to give us a little update on her firsthand experience at the high school.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. When we learned that we were going to be moving to mass flexible, we wanted to make sure that we reached out to all parties and communicated our plans and our expectations effectively. After your last school committee meeting, we had a faculty meeting the next afternoon, and so we were able to talk to our staff first about the unmasking policy, hear any of their concerns and feedback, and then move forward. We sent a letter home to both students and families with the expectation that masks would be flexible for those who are vaccinated. And then followed up going room to room with a home-based presentation with the same information that teachers gave the presentation notes, and we followed up to answer questions and visited each of the rooms a couple of times prior to going mask flexible. So we were able to talk to students and teachers about any concerns that they had, any questions that they had before anyone was coming into the building unmasked. We then followed up with a letter to every student who was listed as unvaccinated to just reiterate the expectation that anyone who is unvaccinated remains masked per the policy and, and any ways to update that information should family circumstances change. Even though we have about 16% of unvaccinated students, I would say 50 to 60% of all students right now are remaining masked. I noticed that at the holiday concert last Thursday evening, it was almost 100% of every student and family, friend, member who came to the performance were in masks. So people are still adhering at a pretty high level to, to that. The message that we've been working on is to respect and support personal decision. We certainly, you know, in the first day or two, we heard about, are people going to be put into camps? Is this going to be a case of, you know, pressuring people to mask or to unmask? And we really worked very hard to say this is a very deep and personal decision, even for vaccinated students who choose to remain masked for whatever reason. We may never know all of the reasons behind a student's decision, but we need to respect it and support it. And that has gone very well. We certainly have been attentive and in tune to students and staff members who have come to us. We've done a little bit of troubleshooting around taking precautionary measures, having K95 masks for staff members who may have some concerns. But overall, students are working together, staff is circulating classrooms, working with all students. Lunches have been the same, so that hasn't changed since October. Students are able to unmask in the cafeteria. So overall, things are going very smoothly. We're, we're happy with where we're at. We know this is a change for a lot of people. We really just need to continue to be supportive of everyone's individual decision for those who can opt into the flexible part of the policy.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. That concludes my presentation. Chairman Long?
We can hear you, Mike. Start all over.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Get us all over.
I was actually sounding smart. Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. McGuire. I was just going to start by, you know, congratulating the people that you mentioned at the beginning of the, your presentation. It's great to see the opportunities that they're taking outside of the, you know, Cituit Public Schools and outside of the classroom. I'll turn it over to the committee to see if they have any questions for either Superintendent Burkhead or Dr. McGuire. I just had two. First, Dr. McGuire, I think one of the things that we've heard a little, a little bit from families is, you know, that the students that don't, aren't wearing a mask or are, there's some, you know, back and forth between students on, well, why are you wearing a mask? Or why, why don't you take it off? You know, not necessarily getting to the vaccination status. I guess if, if students are seeing or feeling that type of response, has it been communicated away from, be able to reach out to the administration, to their teachers in order to get that rectified?
Yes, absolutely. So they can go to school counseling or an administrator at any time. Since we've been unmasked, we've been in classrooms every day and reminding students about personal decision, about respecting privacy, having those conversations. I said, we've had the, the kind of message, this may even be your closest friend, but it's still probably not appropriate to ask. And, and some students are taking it from just a, just a curiosity, not thinking about the implication or the pressure that puts on someone else. And that happened in the first day, and we addressed that a little bit very quickly and have also given students the opportunity to come to us or teachers if they hear that kind of conversation so that we can privately have that and talk about the appropriateness of that.
Okay, thank you. I mean, one of the biggest concerns is obviously making sure the kids feel comfortable and that learning experience doesn't, you know, get diminished by sitting in the back wondering, well, you know, I'm wearing a mask, what do people think of me? So I'm, I'm glad that that's being communicated to students on a regular basis.
And honestly, so 16% are unvaccinated, over 50% are wearing masks. That pressure, just by the sheer numbers, doesn't appear to be there, because it is a, a personal choice for so many students right now. And some are very vocal about it. I'm visiting with my grandmother, I'm traveling. I, I have certain things coming up, and maybe in January I'll feel differently. Others are not, and it's more personal, and that's fine, too. But just that, the fact that it's not the 16% and everybody else, even if that were the case, we would work through that, that situation as well. But the numbers are high and it's, it's, there's safety in that, there's comfort in that.
Okay, thank you. And I don't, I don't have any kids in the high school, so I didn't get the communication that you sent out. But if families have any concerns, should we include a way for families to reach out, either to you directly, the superintendent or whoever, just to get their, their questions answered?
Both superintendent, school counselor or administrator, we're all happy to field any of those concerns or questions at any time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McGuire, I, I was just curious. I can imagine there's lots of learning happening, because you're doing this new. And so I'm wondering, as you reflect on these first four, six days, however you're counting it, counting it, what are we learning about this process that eventually, hopefully, will be able to carry forward into the other schools? I'm just curious, like, what are your takeaways from this, these first few days?
I think one of the big takeaways, and it was, you know, from our neighboring districts, was to start with the communication before anyone thinks about unmasking. So to do that a week in advance, taking the show on the road and going into every classroom and saying, if you have a question, if you have a question you don't want to ask it here, stop us in the hallway, come to the office, excuse yourself, and we can do that privately. Send us an email. And to give them different opportunities and venues to be able to connect before we went unmasked, we met with a couple of kids with their school counselors in conjunction and talked through some scenarios. And, and I think that was helpful to be able to do that. We certainly cannot alleviate every fear and anxiety that there is about COVID, and we know that. And coming from so long, we know that every time we have a change, there's a process to that. So I think it's acknowledging and giving space for that and being able to just hear and say, I, I'm hearing you. What can make it better in this moment? And then how do we make steps forward? So if we give parents that space, teachers that space, and students that space, time heals all, and we'll continue to, you know, progress as a school and as a district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Superintendent Burkhead, I know you talked about, you know, reaching out to Cohasset in a normal and regular basis. Is there communication with some of the other districts that might have hit the 80% but have decided not to go to a mass flexible option at this time, or, you know, is there any feedback that we've gotten from them for concerns that they had that we, we tried to address? Is there anything, anything that you can share?
At this point, the only names of schools that the DESI was able to give us were schools that are currently using the mass flexible. So I think there's four or five. There's three I mentioned, including us. There's Hopkinton and King Philip. So those are the five groups I've been communicating with. I'm not sure who the other ones are that have been, have applied for adestation, and there's probably about another 10 or 15 that have applied and approved, but I don't know who they are at this time.
Let's see, no other questions from the committee? Thank you both.
I just had a quick question, Mike. Go ahead, Peter.
That, um, Dr. McGuire, thanks very much. I, I know that as a school commander, we've received a handful of emails of folks who are concerned about it, and I think that your response really helped answer a lot of that. I guess my, my question is, and probably more for, for Superintendent Burkhead, is I think that you guys unfortunately have to work over school break, too, I think. So at, at what point do you think, if there were to be a change in this mask flexible policy, would that be communicated? Or we kind of just, kind of get an idea of whether or not there's a group that will meet to determine if we should go mask, mask on when we come back or vice versa? Just wanted to get some, a timeline on that potentially, not to put you on the spot necessarily.
No, thank you, Mr. Gates. Not at all. No, I think it's a valid question, one we talk about every day. Again, we have a, I take input from a lot of folks, and I'm, you know, certainly from our principals on, on the, at high school, especially because they're going through this right now, our school nurses, our nurse leader, our medical advisory committee. So there's constant flow of communication coming in. You know, things we had talked about were, you know, cases in the school, and we look at cases of any, any potential or evidence of spread within the school. We look at trends over time of cases. And now we know the holidays are coming up. We had the post-holiday Thanksgiving, and our numbers were at the high school pretty consistent. I think we had five before the, the Thanksgiving break, and then we had nine, seven and nine. This week, we have zero to date. Over the last three days, we go from Friday to Friday. So, excuse me, Saturdays to Friday. So from last Saturday, Sunday, and today, we've had zero cases at the high school. So those are the things we're looking at. So the, what I appreciate is there's a lot of great communication from parents and students that when there's a positive case, they report it to either, you know, the school nurse administration, typically the nurse that gets right to, we have a very good, well-oiled machine of communication where this principal's text me right away, but they also are getting in touch with a nurse leader who aggregates, collects all the aggregate data from each school and sends that out to myself and a few other administrators, central office team, and those on the, on part of the MAC group as well. So we've got daily updates on the numbers. In fact, I, when there's a case, I'll get it within five or 10 minutes. So there's, there's always that. And so over vacation, a little different, people still call them in. Our nurse leader, who, who doesn't, isn't supposed to be working on vacation, will still get those and share them. So I think we keep track of them. And I guess as far, and, and I'll say, I want to give a shout out to obviously the nurses as well who work evenings and weekends and make those one-to-one calls for parents, because, you know, the tentacles of this are so, are so extensive. For a fact, we've got the COVID, and that's, you know, it's tough on a family. They have the child home, but then the close contacts, we're lucky to have test and stay. But it's also a heavy strain on, on our staffing, because, you know, every morning, we've got, you know, if you look at the, the cushion cases, or, you know, they're at zero the last three days, which is nice to see, but they, they really went up over the last couple of weeks. And test and stay was a, a big deal at a small elementary school, so it took up a lot of staffing. So we consider all those things over the vacation, where we, we continue to do that. So I encourage folks that if a child is tested positive over the break, that we get the information. So tip similar to any other week, yes, we, you know, even though there'll be folks on vacation, you know, we, we're 24/7, 365 when it comes to this. We'll get notified, we'll have it. And, you know, if the determination, Mr. Gates, I guess to answer in the short answer, if there's a rash of cases at the high school, if it looks like it's spreading like wildfire through a group of individuals or the school over the break, and we'll make, we'll make that determination as soon as we possibly. school over the break, and we'll make the, we'll make that determination as soon as we possibly can, sooner than later. But it could be if it gets, if we find that news out Saturday or Sunday, then it could be the day before. I think the good news of this is, you know, wearing a mask is, if we go to that, even if we worst-case scenario, and here on the side of question, if we if we found out that on Saturday and Sunday of June, you know, New Year's Day, let's say, a couple of days before we get back, we find out we have an explosion of cases, and we have to move to mask, that message gets out, and we have masks at the school. If a kid didn't get it or hear it, we hand them out when they come in, and we can move that easily to a masked option. So I think to prepare people, we get it out as early as possible. But like anything COVID, we don't know, we can't predict when those numbers come in and when we hit that critical mass. But we're prepared to implement that on an evening's notice or a day's notice, and do have the capacity to, you know, let kids know as they come in if they did miss the announcement, if it isn't a day's notice, worst-case scenario. But the goal, obviously, is to give some type of notice before we move to that.
Great. Thanks very much. I think it helps to show the the advantages of the policy. You can, you know, you have the power to have mask or max festival rather than waiting for us to meet again in a couple of weeks. So that's good. I hope you get a couple.
Yeah, I addressed that point, Mr. Gates. Yeah, thank you. Because I think there's some confusion with folks that, you know, that when the policy was approved, that I got some emails on this, and I just want to clarify some confusion that, you know, oh, boy, the superintendent says, you know, all this authority and power, and people were concerned about that. And I would be, too. You know, you don't want the power in the hands of one person, too much power. I want people to understand that in that policy, and encourage people to read it. There is a process where I do consult with many different groups and advisories, and, and, most importantly, I report to the chairman, in this case, Mr. Long, my recommendation for decision, and then I have to go and notify all members of the school committee. So I want people to notice that, know that, so that if I make a decision to go to mask or take the mask off, that you all have to be notified. And there's a conversation that goes along with that. So that, and, you know, we don't meet like this. And I think that's the advantage advantage and flexibility of the of the process. But it allows me, which we can do, I can speak to all committee members individually as the superintendent, and that's part of that decision-making process. And I want people to know, if I were to do that, let's say we put the mask back on, and I would contact all of you. And if I get a strong, you know, response back from each of you that, oh, no, that that doesn't make sense, or or the opposite, if we go masks on, and then we want to take them off again, I'm going to have the data ready for you, I'm going to share the rationale, and then I'm going to get your feedback. And if gee, if I say, geez, four or five of the school committee members think that's not a good idea, I won't do that. So the, you know, although I have the final decision-making authority, which is, which makes sense because I'm on the ground and accessing this, and it wouldn't make sense to have meetings every time we wanted to go back and forth, or convenient, or flexible enough, that there is communication with each committee member before that decision is made either way.
Great. I think it's very helpful. I think it's helpful for the committee and for everyone that's listening or watching this recording to understand what the policy actually does. So I appreciate clarification, and thank you. And I hope you get a couple days to enjoy over the vacation.
Thank you. You, too.
Nicole, did you also have a comment?
Peter kind of covered a couple of things that were on my mind, but I this, I wasn't sure I was going to go back. I'm sure I have the information. But if you knew offhand Superintendent Burkhead, how close is our middle school to the 80% threshold, do you know, offhand? I'm assuming we probably, even in elementaries, are probably climbing daily towards it with, you know, little ones becoming fully vaccinated as well. No pressures.
Yeah, I think we're still in the in the low 70s. I don't think we're close yet.
Yeah.
So it'll be a little while.
Cohasset must be up there, then. They hit the Cohasset, you said, already hit the 80?
Yeah, well, and that's a good, let me explain that. Cohasset is a connected middle and high school. Ours are securely separate. We make sure it's two separate buildings. Theirs is free-flowing in between, if you're, if people are familiar with it, where they do share space. So they made the, they made it with their middle school because the numbers of the high school and the high school staff and the middle school staff are all included in that average. So I think that's how they, you know, because it is unique that a middle school would be ready this early. So that's how they got there. It was initially an obstacle for them because the high school was ready right away, but they had to include their middle school numbers, which brought them below 80. But now that the middle school kids are getting up there, they were able to push over that. But that's how they calculated. So most other middle schools in the state will lag slowly behind them. And as we get close, and I want, and I think that's a great question, because people have asked, as we get closer, we're going to start posting vaccination numbers at the various levels. I think we've done it once already, and we may start including it. And so people will have plenty of notice when we're getting close, especially the middle school is likely to be the next one, obviously. But we'll get that on in advance, and that people will know when we're close to hitting the 80%, when we apply for attestation, so that there'll be some planning to take place. Like Dr. McGuire said, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in preparation for moving towards the max mass flexible plan. But there'll be no surprise, we're not close enough to to be there after the vacation right now. But getting those numbers out soon, I know we have the VaxVian, I think it may be coming even this weekend for the second dose. So we're waiting for once those numbers come out. And we're also continuing to collect data from other folks that are getting vaccinated at all levels and the staff. So it's a lot of work for our nurses. So we were not able to do that on a weekly basis, it's probably not realistic. But likely, when we get back from break, we'll have some numbers to share at all the levels, so people will know exactly where we stand for the other schools.
And just to be clear, Superintendent Burkhead, what would happen is, for each of the five schools, we would hit the 80%. We would apply for attestation. And then at that point that we get confirmation from the state, then we would have the ability to go mask flexible when we're ready, and not necessarily, you know, immediately, because we got that attestation approved.
Yes, that's a great point, that the attestation simply means that they turn that back over to local jurisdiction. It's not a, okay, you're officially mask optional. They leave that up to local jurisdictions to make that decision. So that would come back, and to us, it would fall under our policy, which then would allow me to report out to you and say, okay, we've been approved, here's our timelines and thought for starting at the middle school, at the community now, and then go from there. There would be a process and some, obviously, some notice before we moved into that officially.
Okay, thank you. And I would just add one thing to what Mr. Gates had mentioned earlier. I mean, obviously, when you come to us with a change, typically, that includes all of the backup from the MAC, from the different medical groups that you're working with, and from the administration and our staff. So it's not, you know, I'm coming to you with a recommendation, it's I'm coming to you with a recommendation, and here's why. So that when we do turn back to you to say, yes, we're in favor, no, we're not, there's, you know, everything that you use to make a decision, we have at our fingertips to be able to either challenge something that you're saying, get additional information, or provide a yes or no response. I just want to make that always clear as well, as part of the conversation.
Right.
Seeing no other questions. Again, thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Next on the agenda is a joint leadership report from our Assistant Superintendent and Director of Business.
Hi, thank you so much. Do you mind if I share my screen?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, you should see a screen that says SIR overview. Dr. Dutch and I have some Skyview information for you about all of the SIR funds that we have access to so far. You can see that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So the first thing that we wanted to share was, I hope that some of you remember, at the beginning of the year, we put out a community survey so that we could have input for SIR3. That went out to teachers, students, community members, and essentially, this is the information that we got back. The biggest need that the community identified was addressing facility needs. I think a lot of that has to do with people really, really wanting us to have the that building renovation. The next two items, very close in percentage, were providing mental health supports and providing high-quality instructional materials. The next area slightly less was addressing learning loss. Next one is providing educator support. And the two lowest areas were special population needs and educational technology. So those, that information really kind of, it drove what we requested for SIR3. So the slide I have here is SIR2, because SIR1 is already completed. So Dr. Dutch can tell you a little bit about SIR1.
Well, SIR1 came out right after the pandemic began. We received $78,000 approximately, and that money was spent in June of 2020 on Eureka Math, which was before I arrived, before Ms. Driscoll arrived, and before the superintendent were here. So that was a decision made prior to our arrival. And that money, so that money was expended early on in the in the process. SIR2 has been around for a little bit longer, and we're just now accessing that. So I'll turn it back to Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you. So I think you've all, you're all familiar with the programs that we already have running that are being funded through SIR2, like the C programming and the Mass Insight for Advanced Placement Support, and our SEL teams and the partnership with PARE. But something that you might not know is that the SIR2 money, this extends until summer 2023. So this is not a one-year expense. This is something that we really can spread out a little bit. SIR3 is even a little bit longer, and we are waiting for this to be approved right now. We put in for purchasing updated coordinated curriculum materials with a literacy focus and supporting professional development. We ask for facility enhancements to improve traffic flow and HVAC repairs. We've requested to be able to use money for contracted services for mental health screening, testing, and services after the screening and testing. And we also have a need for one-to-one Chromebook carts for the elementary schools to make sure that there's equitable access. And this is what the timeline looks like. So this is very important. SIR1 has already been completed. SIR2, we have until September 30th, 2023, to expend those funds. SIR3 has not yet been approved, but when it is, we will have until the end of 2024. So right now, because we have some capital expenses in SIR3, a lot of school districts do, and the state is reviewing their, I guess, process to expend capital funds to make it easier for school districts. So we don't know what that looks like yet, how that will be easier. We're waiting with bated breath to find out, and they will let us know as as soon as they can. Is there anything else you want to add, Dr. Dutch?
No, I think that was pretty comprehensive for a treetop view.
Okay.
Thank you both. Are there any questions from the committee on the presentation that we just presented?
No, I just want to thank Heidi and Dr. Dutch for, I think it's just helpful. I appreciate that you keep us up to date in terms of what's going on, and let the other community members know that there are funds that are accessible to us, and we're, we're reaching for them and putting them to good use. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Skoll, thank you so much for your, for your presentation. I noticed in there that there was money set aside for the professional development funds. And I was curious, you know, I'm sure we're all aware and reading and talking to different teachers and staff, not just in Massachusetts, but across the country, that there's real concerns around burnout, stress, anxiety. And I'm just wondering, sort of, in addition to sort of professional learning, what are you thinking about in terms of the care of our faculty and staff around these real important issues? Because obviously, we want to retain our teachers, and I don't want to forget our teachers, and that they are also human beings dealing with the pandemic in the school and also in their own families. So can you speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So the funds that are in there for SEL screening and training and support, that does not only mean only for children. That is for anything that we need to build those support systems. Right now, because we're in such an intense, unprecedented time, there isn't a menu of vetted excellent products that we can say, oh, let's choose one of these very well-known programs that will have these results. That doesn't exist. So right now, we're doing our best to create partnerships, to build some of those. I actually, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Dutch, Superintendent Burkhead, and I have a meeting to discuss exactly that. Bill just sent that out today, because we need to make sure that whatever we're doing isn't just a one-and-done. It has to be a part of a sustainable program. I actually met with the professional development coordinator from the ADL, who has all sorts of series that we might be able to hook onto. But we're really still investigating a lot of those things. But we do have the structure to pay for it through these funds. These are quite literally SIR's emergency funds. So we are supposed to use these for the emergency that started on March 13th.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've seen no other questions. Thank you both for the presentation. It was definitely good to see the result of the survey right against the, how we reason the funding. So that'll be, it was good at least for me to be able to visualize. And then, you know, it'd be interesting to see how it goes through the next, you know, couple of years while we spend those funds. So next on the agenda, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Dutch for his Director of Business and Finance Leadership Report.
Thank you. I've been asked to provide an update on our FY22 budget, the budget that we're currently in, how we're doing both on revenue and expenditures. So I'm going to share my screen. Is that readable for everyone, or do I need to make that larger?
I'm good.
Okay. So the the first section that you have here is revenue. These are dollars coming into us. So the first column that you have on your left is a description of of those funds. Then the amount that was adopted, and in some cases, that was an estimate of dollars that would come in, both for fees and grants. Actual are the actual dollars that have come in to this point in time. Additionally, we spend money out of these different funds. There are resources allocated, excuse me, dollars allocated against these revenue amounts to pay expenses. The difference, that difference represents the difference between the adopted budget and the actual amount that we have received thus far. And then the year-to-date available is what's left. And obviously, we don't take anything against the town appropriation, because most of our budget come is against against that appropriation. So you can see, we'll jump down to athletic fees. You can see that we anticipated $220,000. We've already received $141,300. That's for one season and part of a second season. So there's about $78,000 shortfall, but with the spring still to come, we're in a pretty good place there. Non-resident tuition, we budgeted $158,000. We get four payments a year from students who are coming into our special ed programs like IXL and GEMS from other districts. So we're, we're in a pretty good place there, assuming we're going to get three more payments about the same. We'll be beyond our estimated budget. If you then look at Circuit Breaker, we estimated $968,000. Again, we get quarterly payments. We've already received the first payment at $421,000. If you do the the rough math, that puts us through about $1.2 million. So we'll, we'll be doing a little better there for revenue, which should help us in the event that some Uh, which should help us in the event that some, some students may be moving in from, from out of town, uh, meetings with specialized services. Or others who may be uh recommended for out-of-district placements. ECC, uh, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted. We've only received fifty-two thousand dollars. There are about seventeen families that haven't paid anything yet. Uh, we've sent a couple of notices to them requesting payment and uh after the holidays. Not wanting to be too Scrooge-like, we will, we'll wait till after the holidays and uh make an additional request. And offer some options uh for payment plans. The next three uh are grants that are, were one-time grants again through the federal government. We didn't budget for SR two because we didn't know when we were budgeting if we were going to use that money in this particular year. Um, so we're, and again, the items that we're, we're using uh SR two for are on an ongoing basis. And there'll be some carryover into the next fiscal year, no doubt. And they're all things that we did not budget for. Uh, so it's not coming, it's not saving us money within the budget. Uh, same is true for early childhood ARP is American Rescue Plan. It's a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and that also has to be spent on items that we did not originally budget for. Uh, so, so that's what's been done by uh Dr. Boebert. Has identified some needs uh that we could not do through the, through the regular budget. Uh, IDEA is special education and again, it's American Rescue Plan funds. And it's a small amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Um, two ninety-eight program improvement and two seventy-four, again, early childhood. Those are grants that we've gotten in the past. They did not uh offer those grants this year, no doubt. Uh, primarily because of SR and the uh ARP funds in those other two areas. Gate receipts, uh, excuse me, uh, ECC. Uh, we have received. That's, I'm sorry, that's another grant, twenty thousand two and four. We budgeted twenty thousand three oh four. And we've received twenty thousand four forty-three. So uh, we're, and we won't be getting any more than that. So we're, we're in a good place. Gate receipts, we budgeted fourteen thousand. Those are uh the dollars coming in for spectators to our sporting events. We're already surpassed that at fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Um, we still have uh winter sports, basketball and hockey, which have revenue coming in. Spring sports primarily do not charge. So uh, again, we're in a pretty good place. The bus lease is a, is a wash. We, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then we expend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it uh, it, it simply shows up here as revenue. Um, and we will receive that. It's, it's a journal entry from the town. Transportation revenue, we budgeted two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So to this point, we have received two hundred and five thousand. We are adding uh more students to the buses now that we have a good handle on uh who's riding, who's not. So we should be pretty close to that budgeted amount. Um, and we have some carryover from previous years, which I'll explain as we get to the end of the presentation. Metco, we budgeted four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we just got noticed today of, it's actually five hundred and six thousand. He just got another three thousand dollars. Uh, and we, we do identify needs for that and uh providing services to our Metco students. Title one, uh, I anticipated those numbers being higher than what we budgeted. Uh, there were many more uh title one students. Um, again, that money has to be spent on students who are entitled uh in need of title one services. And all of that is spent at the middle school. Uh, so we'll, we'll redo that grant to uh expend those funds. Title two A is uh educator improvement. So that all goes to uh professional development. And again, we got about ten thousand dollars more, so that will uh be able to expend those funds as well. IDEA two forty is special ed and you can see we got about three thousand dollars more there. And then title four is uh arts enrichment, so music, art. Uh, performing arts, those sorts of uh programs. So you can see we're in a pretty good place uh as far as our revenue goes. Uh, move into the expenditures next. And here, uh, I'll go through these columns and they're all the same. So again, adopted budget is what we uh decided to uh allocate to these different line items. Year-to-date actuals is what we've spent so far. In some cases, we, we know what we can expect to spend and we have the ability to encumber those funds. So we do, so we don't spend them on something else. And then that provides you with our year-to-date available as a last column. So I'll, I'll go through these quickly, um, because otherwise we, we could be here a long time. There are a lot of line items. I wanted to include all of them so that you could see what falls into these categories. I'll focus on anything that should uh that might, you know, draw attention and provide explanation for you. Particularly if there is a negative or the numbers um don't line up and, and you need, need some clarity on that. Um, so where there is a specific individual, uh, I, I did not include that dollar amount as I didn't last year when we, we presented the budget. Um, just out of courtesy to, to that person to not draw attention. But you can see the, the bottom line and uh as far as the school district, the school committee and the school district. We're, we're in, in line with our expenditures with the exception of contracted services. Uh, included in that are, are the software applications that we use for uh absence monitoring. Uh, educator evaluation, all of our student uh record, stu- student management system. And then school spring, which is our uh teacher recruitment uh application. So you see that as a negative. Um, we budgeted a specific amount. We've spent significantly more. Uh, the reason for that is a lot of this was in other line items and you'll see some, some uh overages of available funds in those line items. And I'll, and I'll draw your attention to them as to why, you know, why those are over. And it'll usually link back to this uh, this line item. Um. Going to curriculum leaders, uh, again, nothing significant until you get to uh contract services. Again, um, a lot of software curriculum applications were budgeted elsewhere. And we've, we've tried to correct that so that we're representing money being spent uh by a department. That belongs to the entire district and not to a specific school only. Um, so that, that's why you're seeing that difference there. Uh, business line item. That line is uh in good shape, no issues there. HR supervisory, again, um, we've, we've made some minor. Clarifications on how we structure this. So clerical, business office clerical, they were all up in the superintendent's office and didn't really belong there. Um, because there are from, from the state, there are specific categories for human resources. And we have an HR department. Um, and there is clerical support in the business office, so we categorize it there. So that's why you're, you, you would see some differences there compared to last year. Information technology, uh, IT contract services, there's a little bit of a, a shortfall here compared to what we budgeted. Primarily because we've encumbered for some anticipated costs. Uh, we did do a uh security, a cybersecurity evaluation, which also uh put us over a little bit um as part of that. Curriculum development leadership, uh, we adopted a budget of one point two million dollars for department heads and curriculum coordinators. Uh, when in reality, they are teachers uh one quarter of the time, so twenty-five percent of their salary is charged to the teacher line item. And that's why you see this amount here. This is an actual amount uh that, that is budgeted in reality. Uh, principals line item, so there's quite a bit that goes into that. That's all the principal salaries, assistant principal salaries, all of the secretaries. The supplies that they need for their school, uh, you're going to see that we, we have quite a surplus here already. Um, and that's partly because some of the materials that were in this line item are now up in school district uh for contracted services. Uh, just as you see here, there's fifty, fifty thousand dollars left and we're already at the end of December. Uh, that's because we moved most of that to district expenses. Teacher salaries, um, and again, the total salaries for all of our employees. It's close, all of our teachers is closer to twenty-eight million dollars. But you can see here, this is just teachers, doesn't include specialized. It does include librarians. Um, so there, there are a lot of components that, that teachers get broken into. These are your, your primary and subject teachers at the high school. Um, and we're, we're on target. There's, there's no issue there uh regarding those salaries. Same is true with special ed teachers. Substitute teachers thus far, we're, we're in a pretty good place. We budgeted three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we've only expended thirty-seven thousand at this point. Um, lots of, lots of absences, just not a lot of substitutes available. Unfortunately, to this point, we haven't had any long-term or too many uh long-term substitutes. Who uh, if they're a full teacher salary for half a year or more, could, could eat up, uh, you know, sixty thousand dollars pretty quickly out of that line item. Paraprofessionals, uh, we're, we're in a good place there uh financially as well. As well as librarians. This item, uh, in the past, we adopted sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. In reality, at that salary has been moved elsewhere. It was a position that was split. We're now categorizing it as one, one position uh and put the funds together in a line item for that as well. Uh, professional development contractual books to pay for, for uh people to participate in professional development activities. It's not for reimbursement for college courses and uh degree advancement. Textbooks, you can see uh what was adopted and this is based on their requests each year. Uh, the departments make requests for textbooks. Um, and we, we expend against those requests and you can see where we are at this point. Uh, obviously, for example, the business department did not make a request, but then they, they did want to purchase something. So that's why they're a negative. That'll end up uh impacting somebody else potentially, uh, unless we move some funds into this line item from elsewhere. Supplies, those are the consumable items that uh everyone uses. You can see art is uh fairly high. Um, AV tech is a lot of uh the technology uh that the uh tech ad department uses. Music festivals and virtual high school kind of are, are outliers, um, and they fall within this category. Uh, we, we budgeted eighteen thousand dollars. We spent sixteen-two so far for. Uh, for example, we are not offering Latin with a physical teacher in the building. Uh, Latin is being offered through Edgenuity, um, which is a virtual, a virtual platform. We also have a couple of AP students who are, are, are students who are taking uh some advanced. Um, music and Latin courses that aren't offered by Edgenuity, so they're using a program called Virtual High School. Uh, so that, that's the sort of thing that falls into that line item. Special education, uh, you can see there's quite a bit in this category. I'll, I'll try to go through as much of this as possible. Again, I left uh the single salaries out of this. Um, our ECC coordinator is also, although Wampe Tuck is, is within the special ed department. We uh have spent most of the summer programming funds for special ed, special education. Um. Therapeutic, those are, those are uh a couple of people within that salary line item. Um, and then transportation, the cost to transport students. Uh, who are special ed students, usually within Massachusetts nearby. Um, and those are the vans that you see uh and the drivers that you see, see uh around town. Uh, and then private school tuition and collaborative tuition. Uh, those are the, the most significant expenses within special ed beyond salaries. Uh, and you can see that uh we're, we're doing pretty well there. We, we've encumbered one point eight million dollars. Uh, those are bills that we know are coming. When you see the um warrant, I, I continually read you the, the significant large items. And, and usually the bulk of that is private school tuition and collaborative. Uh, so you can, you can see where we are to this point and what's still to be expanded. Uh, guidance, um, again, that when you think of, you know, teacher salaries, they fall within that conceptually. But they do have their own category uh as we, we report our information out. The same is true for school counselor, uh, school psychologists. Um, and again, we're, we're in a pretty good place with all of these, these accounts. School nurse, uh, we have spent a little bit more against the school nurse line item than we normally would because of the test and stay program. Unfortunately, we are getting reimbursed for that through the CARES Act still through Plymouth County, at least through December thirty-first. Uh, and then we'll have to absorb uh the balance. Bus drivers, uh, transportation is bus driver salaries, our fuel expense. Uh, you see the lease of the buses shows up here again. And then uh Eric's, our other expenses within transportation. Uh, fortunately thus far, we budgeted thirty-six thousand dollars for transportation of homeless students. And at this point in time, we don't have any homeless students. So uh, we, we feel fortunate so far uh to this point. Um, athletics, you can see the, the expenses within the athletic department as well. And, and I will read all of those to you. Uh, and some of this is offset through revenue. Uh, student activities, the mo- the bulk of that is advisors. Uh, those are the different clubs at the high school and the middle school. School securities or school resource officer. Custodial salaries, those are the custodians in all of our buildings. We also have maintenance, a couple of maintenance staff. Um, our assistant facilities director and then uh a maintenance staff member who repairs items. Our utility expenses, we have gas uh for our heat and we've encumbered what we think we'll spend, which will result in a little bit of an over expenditure. This year, hopefully that we have a nice warm winter and uh we see some savings there. Electric utilities, again, we have a pretty good idea of what that will cost us. Um, so we're able to encumber in advance. And again, you know, we, we are conservative and generally encumber more than we think we'll need. So I'm, I'm anticipating we'll be pretty close to uh fully expended and not, not overdrawn on that end. Contracted services, uh, those are mostly repairs. So if we have to repair something uh for, with an electrician. Uh, with um the heating system, HVAC, any of our plumbing. You can see we've budgeted quite a bit for HVAC. We've already expended a hundred and one thousand dollars, so I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that we're going to overspend that. And need to, to find that from other sources uh where we may have some lower expenditures. Um, rubbish will definitely, trash uh pickup will definitely be overspent. They increase their rates after we set the budget. So that kind of gives you an idea and I don't know why, didn't see that before as to what the totals there. So then the last thing I just want to show you, um, these, these revenue funds here that I'm, that I'm highlighting. Uh, are accounts that are called revolving or reserve accounts. And they don't have to be expended every year, so we can keep them as in reserve. Uh, in the event that we need those funds at another point in time. So you can see that in non-resident tuition in particular, we had two hundred and seventy- So you can see that in non-resident tuition in particular, we had two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars of carryover that we, we can save for a point in time when we need it, when growth isn't as good, when revenue doesn't come in for whatever reason. So that we don't have to cut programming and have, have, you know, loss of supplies or layoffs of, layoff of staff. And that's true with, with all of these, so you can see where the surpluses are and what we actually have available to expend as, as we need to. Grants, on the other hand, do have to be spent down each year with some exceptions. Some can be expanded over a two-year period. IDEA, for example, is generally a two-year grant. Esser, as was mentioned, is until twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty-three. So we'll have some carryover of that next year when, when you, when you see this again. So you can see what we have in totality available down here as, as a total. So I'll stop sharing my screen at that point. I know there's a lot of information that was provided. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, and thank you for going through that as deeply as you did, Dr. Dutch. It's great to be able to just, you know, see those line items and compare it while you, you go through and provide the the extra color behind it. But I'll do the open up to the committee for any questions that they may have for Dr. Dutch.
Mike, I have a couple of questions for Dr. Dutch. The, the virtual high school, is that per student or is that like a one? One-time membership fee?
The, the Edgenuity is a district license, so it's as many students as we want to enroll in those programs. Virtual high school, the, the actual program called Virtual High School is a per, is at a per student cost. And it depends on whether it's a semester pro course or a full year course as to what the cost is. But it doesn't really matter which course they're taking, they're all, they're all the same.
And, you know, we, we put together a couple of years ago, and I think this, the last town meeting, we voted to have money put into that sped account. Is that part of the town?
The specialized stabilization account is on the town side. We don't, we don't see that. And it is, again, it's, it's kind of, well, it's a stabilization account, just like any other. Where we would have to go to the town to access that through town meeting. But we, we, we have the option of budgeting amounts into that. What would more likely happen is if there was surplus at the end of the year in the special ed line item. The two options we have are to prepay some of the, the next year's costs. Or we could move that money back to the town. They would have to vote at spring town and fall town meeting to move that money into the stabilization account. The risk is if they don't vote to do that, then they just take, take ownership of those funds. So we, we have a good relationship though, and I'm confident that if that was the recommendation of the school committee, that that's the direction the, the select board and the finance advisory committee would go.
I mean, it looks like overall that, you know, we're on track to staying within the budget. Because you do have that option if something's over, but another line item is under. You know, you can offset that.
Yeah, fortunately, the, you know, the, the budget, the way the budget is developed with the town, we get, we get an appropriation and really don't have to sell a budget to the town. We, we, we just have to make the decision as to how we want to spend the forty-three million dollar, the forty-one million dollars that they, that they give us. But if it is our responsibility, if there are shortfalls, it, it would be a challenge to go back and ask for additional funding. We did that last year specifically for the kindergarten where we weren't charging. And they graciously provided that and, you know, I, I, I don't think that's something we'd want to do regularly, so we need to live within our means and I, I think we're doing a good job of that at this point. Last year, at, at this point in time, with all of the expenditures that I wasn't sure we would get back through the CARES Act. I, I was losing some sleep. Now I'm, I'm good. I'm not worried about our budget. I think we're going to be just fine.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Hi, Dr. Dutch.
Hi.
So the Esser funds, can, can those also be used to support art, music and STEAM education for pre-K to twelve or?
They, they can. It's, it's pretty flexible as to where those dollars can be used. Especially, especially the S two and three. Esser one was a little more restrictive. The, the only caveat to that is there are certain percentages that have to be spent on SEL.
Right. Okay. Just something that I know, you know, families have been pushing for additional art and music performances and especially at elementary level for many years. So if we had any way to get those needs met, that would be great. Another question was just with the test and stay expenses. So when that program expires, do we have a plan or what are we thinking in terms of expenses for that? If the, if I heard you correctly, I think that program expires at the end of this year or there's going to be no extension of that, it would be on our
The, the test and stay, the, the materials themselves are at no cost to the district. It is the, the additional staff that we need to administer the test and stay that have been the expense to this point. I don't know what the state will do as far as continuing to provide the, the materials to administer testing for the most part. You know, I, I think without them knowing what's going to happen with COVID, it's, it's hard to plan that far into the future. But as far as our staff, we're, we're committed to supporting the nurses and making sure that we have enough staff to provide the test, to, to administer the test and stay program while still making sure that every student who needs nursing support throughout the day has that, has that available to them.
Okay, yeah, I know that's a tricky balance for sure, so we appreciate all their work.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions for Dr. Dutch? Well, thank you for providing that presentation. It's a good, good thing to see going into the next, as we start looking at the budget in the next couple of months and the next year.
Mr. Long, may I make a comment when you have a moment? Just want to summarize, you saw the, kind of like a package deal with the Esser report tonight in the budget. You know, I think a major part of our responsibility is that our values align with where we spend our money and we wanted to make sure we're, we're almost at the half year mark that I think you just mentioned it as well, before we jump into the FY twenty-three budget, which will take which will consume a lot of time and a lot of numbers and that kind of thing. We wanted to make sure that we shared. This is one thing I think Dr. Dutch and our team has been has received positive reinforcement is the transparency of the budget. That's what Dr. Dutch shared tonight with the public is exactly what we use. Those are real numbers. We wanted to make sure that the community saw that and with all the good, bad and ugly, the the excesses, the negatives and how we kind of monitor that and are stewards of that money and take it very seriously. And I think, you know, also putting the committee and the community at ease that, you know, and Bob put it very well, there was a lot of sleepless nights last year. With less moving parts this year, we're managing that money very responsibly and very frugally and we will do the same. I think with the Esser, that was the same thing to give you the first glance of what we're applying for. Once that money comes in, we have specifics on where we're spending that money. We will do some more reports to share that. And with those S or two and three where they're extended years beyond, there is some flexibility within that so that if we have to pivot and move, we'll also bring that up to your attention, to the community's attention. So want to make sure that that information is out there and that we're being very transparent above board, what, what monies we have, where we're spending it, where our income comes and where our debits come from and how we're spending it. So want to just thank our team for sharing that and certainly if there's community members out there that have questions after this evening, we'd be happy to clarify or answer anything.
Great point. Thank you for sharing that, Superintendent Burkhead.
Just one more comment, Mike, if I can, to, just in general, I think budgetary, budgeting wise, it's and this isn't a situat thing, it's just like, you know, COVID thing that it's concerned, like for us to be extra forward thinking because some of this money, it's like, you know, completely COVID related, but then we're going to get these amazing additions and then it's like thinking super far future, you know, not super far, but say four plus years out, like, you know, we have to be able to support things that are of value to students and teachers, so that's certainly tricky, but, and I know you all are, are doing that, but just keeping it all in mind that like this budget and last year with these, you know, all these grants and these COVID reliefy things and it's not reality really unless, but we want things to stick that went well. So I guess, you know, I don't know, any comments to that, Dr. Dutch?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that we've made a conscious decision not to do is to buy things with these, the money that's one-time money that, that we can't then continue to sustain. We, you know, we, we've been calling it a cliff. We don't, we don't want to get to a cliff and then look for the resource and it, it's not available any longer. So all of the, the things that we're buying with this one-time money are one-time purchases that aren't continual renewables that, you know, they're not long-term contracts that we've got to keep, keep going and then add into the budget somehow. Because we recognize that this, this money along with the growth of the town is not going to continue indefinitely. Everything is cyclical. Financially in particular, and we want to make sure that we, we're cautious with how we spend those funds and we have been.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
So moving on in the agenda, the next item that we have is a subcommittee report from Superintendent Burkhead on the social educational collaborator.
Thank you, Chairman Long, and as you know, we're a member of the Board of Executives for the Social Collaborative and we meet monthly and just providing you an update, a lot of budgetary items similar to we saw, saw tonight. At the meeting, the FY twenty-two, which is the current budget similar to we saw tonight, was updated and shared with the board with concerns, with positive things. And, you know, their major concern for this collaborative is staffing right now. Is, is finding enough staff to support the needs of this, of the collaborative. So other than that, the, the budgets sound in good shape. So that was a good thing. And they also shared for their FY twenty-three initial kind of overview of what looking for and the biggest concern there were the aging of their van fleet to support transporting kids for certain activities and those things. So we were given a kind of heads up that that would be something that would be a major part of the FY twenty-three budget, which will probably be here at the next few meetings, like we're all in budget season, so that's coming up. And they shut down the FY twenty-two budget. Had that audited, the auditor was there to kind of give us an update on what they found, which was a, a sound budget that was spent appropriately and we voted on that as well. So those are some of the things that we, the business that we conducted at the last meeting.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for Superintendent Burkhead on the collaborative update? Moving on, we have the first and only opportunity for public comment in tonight's meeting. If people want to raise their hand, I'll call them, hopefully in the order that they raise them. I know we do get some feedback after the last school committee meeting. Just want to stress again, you know, anyone who wants to come in and make a comment can. This is not a question and in through the school committee, but if people do have questions, you know, definitely feel free to either reach out to a member of the committee, to the administration, we'll be more than happy to get the answers that you need. And obviously we'll take feedback on, you know, good or bad for anything that is being discussed in either this meeting or just through the school, but you know, obviously there should not be an attack on others, there should just be a debate on the actual conversation itself and not the the person or the opinion that they brought. For the first person that had their hand raised with, oh, and, you know, as always, if people can state their name and address to the record, we would appreciate it. The first person is Lori Withrow.
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted, Lori Withrow, sixty-two and Vinyl Road. I first want to just compliment tonight's meeting that this was, I loved tonight's meeting and the professionalism from Doc, from Mr. Burkhead to Dr. McGuire to Dr. Dutch. Like it was definitely a pleasure to listen tonight. Dr. McGuire on the high school, that was really great, the way that you presented that, thank you. And especially Dr. Dutch, I love the transparency that you showed tonight. That's something I've been looking for, for a long time and to see it this time of the year and to see where we're at, where we're going and before we get to January, February, March before the public meeting in a couple of months as well as the presentation before the town meeting, it is so great to see that transparency and the detail that you have there. It's really great. Thank you. And I just had one comment on that. I know you can't answer because it's public comment, but on the substitute teacher line, I had heard before and maybe someone could answer to that another time. I had heard before, and I don't know if this is true or not, that our town pays less than other towns on substitutes and that's why some people have, who even live in our town have chosen to substitute in surrounding towns or towns further away. So maybe we, someone could maybe look at that data and maybe comment on that at another time or if that's something that might be holding us back on being able to find substitutes in situat. But thank you so much for tonight. I really loved listening and thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Lori, and the, in the question, we could hopefully try to take a look at that. The next person is Beth Tierney. Beth, we can't hear you. We, please don't hear you.
I believe she's just incorrectly connected with audio, so she may not be able to speak right now.
Thanks, Beth. Seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to move forward in the agenda. And Miss Tierney, if you want to send an email to the superintendent and I after this meeting, I'll be more than happy to, to make sure we get a response back to you. So the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts, which is from the Situate Town Library to the High School English Department.
There, we received a donation of fifty-three paper copies and five audio copies of Rising Dispatches From The New American Shore by Elizabeth Rush. Department Chair Scott Belay says this is a perfect fit for the Language of Nature Unit studied in the high school's AP Language and Composition Course. The focus of the course, the unit is to better understand how authors use language to develop their purpose. And the gift allows them to use a contemporary choice in their classroom. This is a nonfiction narrative of personal stories by Elizabeth Rush, an environmental journalist and professor of creative nonfiction at Brown. She interviewed individuals living near the sea, the ocean across America over five years and reveals a lot of the science and difficulty of the rising sea and considering ways of dealing with this environmental challenge. So it is certainly fitting for situat and So it is certainly fitting for situat and for our classes. And we thank them so much.
I think you're providing that background. Are there any questions from the committee? If not, I will accept the most in, uh, regarding the donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the gift from the Situ Town Library with great appreciation. I'll second that.
Thank you. So there were called, uh, Long, yes, Gates?
Yes.
Hi, Porcaskey?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
And Brenda Lee?
Yes.
Uh, uh, thank you, Dr. McGuire. You know, please make sure the, and Mrs. Scopelati, please make sure the, uh, library knows that we, you know, greatly appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Will do.
Um, so there are no minutes to approve tonight. Um, and there was no correspondence in the backup. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is um, updated in the warrants from Dr. Dutch.
So there are two warrants tonight. Uh, the first is warrant S two, one, one, two, zero, nine. Total amount is one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Large expenditures were, uh, private school tuition. Forty-six, forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents to the Riverview School, the Clark School, the Grove School and the Landmark School. We also had a utility, uh, bill for the month, uh, of forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Uh, and those were the only large expenditures in that one. The second warrant is S two, one, one, two, one, six. Total of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, large expenditures, again, uh, private school tuition, forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. And collaborative tuition, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. All to the South Shore Collaborative. Uh, our electric utilities, uh, was thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, and those were the only large expenditures, uh, on this warrant.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Dutch. Are there any questions on the warrants from the committee? Um, is there any other business that members of the committee wanted to bring up in tonight's meeting? Um, so our next meeting is scheduled for January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we will have the high school for student, uh, celebrating student learning. As well as at least right now on the agenda, we have the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three program studies. Um, the members of the committee do have anything they want to add to the agenda, please let me know, um, the first week in January. Um, if not, we will be entering executive session and leaving the public meeting. Um, I do wish everyone on the call who's leaving a, a happy holiday season and a happy new year. As the year ends, if I'm a few of any questions, feel free to reach out, but if not, um, again, happy holidays to all. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to leave regular meeting and enter executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so there will roll call vote to enter executive session. Uh, Gates?
Yes.
Uh, Porcaskey?
Yes.
Brenda Lee?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
And, uh, Long, yes? Uh, thank you, everybody. Have a good rest in it.